Am I the only one that wrote something for questions? I'm the only one speaking?
Yeah.
I should have worn my hillbilly tee. That was another skit you should have seen. Oh, they laughed. Oh, yeah. Oh, it was lying? Okay, that's fine. I ain't saying anything. Yeah, thanks. I don't want to sound too much of a secret.
I told you she was on her roll today.
Sorry, can't spare a square.
Yes.
She's saying, she's saying.
Yes.
No, she said text her. Turn the mic.
Hey, are you going to smile? Internet wifi. Okay. We'll go ahead and start. Okay, thanks. All right. Six thirty-three, let's call for order and we'll do an invocation and a pledge. My Father, thank you for every seat that's been filled here today. For each mind and heart that fills the presence of this room, we thank you. Only you know. Only you truly know what we are setting out to accomplish. We have an idea, a vision, and daily instructions. We have talents, abilities, and time to work. However, only you can see in perfect detail the end of every beginning, every project, every season, every life. Nothing is ever in vain, for even mistakes and missteps are used for good. Blessed with this meeting today and all those present, as well as the lives of those we will encounter afterward. Ready us to make every moment count. And bless every first responder and military member who protect us at home and abroad. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, for those of you following along with the pre-aid agenda or posted agenda, under Title V to the very end of the meeting, after the squaring end, Title V G, we will journey to executive session. And then we'll come back after session with any results and address Item V being the four reports. Item three is public comments. Is there going to be any public comments? Becky Wilson.
Hello, I'm Becky Wilson. I live at eleven oh five, Tony Lane. I'm going to say this quickly because I only get three minutes. I'm sure you're going to cut me off after that. I don't know city procedure. My question is for this Tuesday. Number one, this is for the conclusion on the last part of the packet. You have pages one, two, and three regarding the zoning company you're approving. The mayor elects a chair. Why isn't the board included? Number two, the chair elects a vice chair. Why, again, why isn't the board included? Number three, the chair creates subcommittees. Why doesn't the board have a say in that? Page four. Question four on page two. There is no standard quorum. It's whomever at that time of the meeting that shows up is a majority and the vote will pass. Why wouldn't you set a standard quorum to prevent mishandling of power? This is very important. Question five on page one. It does not state mayor council or any other representative may elect members. My reasoning is so we don't get back court again, meaning when the city can do what they want due to our population being under thirty thousand, they never need to go on a ballot or ask the people before using our tax monies when spending hundreds of thousands of dollars or as well, or we all experienced a huge tax increase, et cetera. So including this in every paragraph on these pages of the conclusion one, two, and three, meaning the board is included, I just think is important. But again, I don't know policy procedure. I was just reading that and I thought it was odd that only certain people were doing the voting and that there was no majority, like a standard, that has to be at the meeting to vote and pass something. So whoever's there, they can just pass and majority vote wins versus you have to have four or three. So that's my questioning.
So Ms. Becky, we can't address it right now. But I just want to clarify, you're talking about the Ardura contract for the contract.
Yes, 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 and it was the conclusion page.
Yeah, and it also says in there the committee's primary task shall be to guide the consultants in the formation of the plan. There's no, there's no executive action that's taken by the advisor. It's called an advisory committee. And it is spelled out very specifically.
And that goes back to the board.
Very specifically.
Okay, because I was in short, I know the board was at the beginning, but then it wasn't at the end. So I just don't know what was left out there because nothing was voted on yet.
It's spelled out very specifically. Six different paragraphs. This is for, the primary task is to guide the consultant.
Right.
And anything, this group is not compiling this information. These are professional consultant groups that are bringing compiled data studies.
To the groups, correct, I understand that.
To council.
Right, yeah.
That's why there's a quorum, like a specific number for quorum because it's an advisory committee. There's a difference between a city council and an advisory committee.
Okay, but if they're voting on something and there's no quorum, and you have twelve people on a member, but you don't need twelve members there.
They typically don't vote unless it's something to say, yes, we are ready. Is the board, is the committee ready to present this to council?
Okay.
They're not spending money, they're not, I mean.
So they have to go to council to get final approval?
Correct.
Well, that's, yes, that answers all the questions out there. Thanks so much.
Talk it when it comes together. Sheriff, do we have any other public comments?
No.
Okay, great. Moving on, item four, consider and take action on a consent agenda. That's over thirty-eight minutes from the April eighteen regular meeting. Do we have a motion? A second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? By? New business. Item five A, presentation from Ryan Porter with Revenue Management Services, all of the status of the sales tax facility projects.
Welcome.
Welcome, Ryan. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mayor Budrill and City Council. Ryan Porter, President of Revenue Management Services. I've got before you all this evening a sales tax report. It's our first report that we've sent to you all. If I may, just before I begin that report, to give a little bit of information about myself, our company, and how we're here to help. This company began its roots out of the tax assessment and collecting office to serve municipal utility districts. And in 2012, moved out of Fort Bend County. We serve counties, cities, special purpose districts, fire departments, et cetera. Working from the tax office, we realized very quickly that there are two main revenue sources for special purpose districts, cities, taxing units, and that is your ad valorem rate and your sales tax rate. And in Texas, the sales tax is very difficult many times to, to control, to wrangle up, and to monitor. And so we've been doing this again for, I've been doing this presently for fifteen years. And what we do is we work directly hand in hand with the comptroller. We get data sets every single month from the city. We get data sets from the state. And so what we do is we do a boots-on-the-ground approach where we come out physically, drive and audit businesses that are frickin' order. We also get confidential information where we have reports from the state every single month that list who is, what permits are operational, what permits are not. And our overall goal is to make sure that we can, one, track the revenue stream from the city, two, recover any revenues that are missing, and three, make sure that the city is getting every penny that it has coming to it. So we begun that. We've started our work last month. It's a very tedious and long process. What you have before you is sort of like a baseline report. The idea being that we take a holistic approach at the district and we have a very broad view to present to you all. And then every single month this report will be updated. And we will submit quarterly actual site inspection where we will come out and audit the district. And so if you would, I'll turn, I'll call your attention to the report. There is a cover page. District updates, letter A. Site inspection of physical campus, this is what I was just mentioning. Where we have performed virtual and physical inspections of the district. And we have added ten new taxpayers to your sales taxpayer role. These were previously not reported to the state. They are all e-commerce based. We'll get into that in just a moment. B, the e-commerce audit. So what we've been doing is we work with the allocations department at the state in reviewing e-commerce. Like most places in Texas, what is in disguise sometimes trumps what is on the ground. Simonson being no different. So e-commerce is one of the most difficult things to monitor because it can come from anywhere. So we've taken a look at that. We've taken a look at your top ten and twenty-five taxpayers for e-commerce. And looking at that and seeing what we know about taxpayers who operate in the cloud, as we call it, that's where we were able to find those ten taxpayers that need to remove the sales taxes back to the city. We are following the House Bill fifty eighty-nine. And we are hoping that that will give some relief to the city regarding its point of sale. Again, we're sitting on top of that. And once we have more to report on that, that will be included in forthcoming reports. So on page four, just kind of utilizing information that we perceive from the state, you'll see that we have some city demographics there where we show your average allocation per month of twenty-two thousand, twenty-six dollars. Twenty twenty-three's total allocations of a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars reflect thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars even. So if we were to look at how are we going to make budget? What can we assume will be monthly revenue stream? That thirty-four thousand is a pretty good indicator of where we are so far per month. Looking back at allocations from 2017 through 2023, now we went back all the way to two thousand with your sales tax. But in Texas, sales taxes are recoverable for five years, sometimes up to six. So we like to use that five-year range because if I find anything that happened within that, we could fully recover that, even if the business is no longer operational. They have a sales tax liability and we work with the state to recover that for you all. So we show that your allocation is two thousand through the present, three point one million. At the bottom, you'll see we have 2017 through 2023's total dollar amounts. Pointing out that in 2020 and 2021, the city was twenty-three and eighteen percent above previous years. And that's important because that's during the pandemic. So even during a pandemic, the city did very well. We currently do not have enough data to give you a percentage total of how 2023 is comparing against 22. But last year, you were twenty-four percent against the previous year. So again, the sales taxes for the district, for the city, are looking very well. On page five, what we'd like to do is using NAICS codes and information from the state, let's break down business sales tax permits by their different categories that is listed for you all. We show two thousand seven hundred and ninety-three permits that the city has. It's on their, it's on their sales taxpayer role. That does not mean that these all remit sales tax to you, but these are mostly e-commerce based that at some point can. So we've broken those down and categorized them on page five for you as well. On page six, what we'd like to do is we go each month and when we get your taxpayer role from the state, we'd like to take a look at that and compare the current taxpayer role against last year. So that would be April of 2023 was the most recent role we received. Five hundred and seven taxpayers represented on that role. In 2022, April showed four hundred and forty-seven, so that's a fourteen percent increase. What we want to see is every month, a certain percentage increase when we compare, say, May of twenty-three against May of twenty-two. If we start to see negatives or dips, that's a red flag and we go into kind of dealing with the state as to why our taxpayers falling off. So far, we've not seen that. Also, February of 2023 reflected six hundred and four total taxpayers. And that is the highest number of taxpayers that the city has seen since, I mean, in its existence. So most of those, again, being e-commerce, but it's indicative of, you know, healthy commerce taking place. Now, February is going to always be a large month for the city, not only in taxpayers, but also in dollars because all your sales taxes you receive from the state are two months in arrears. So February represents spending that happened in December, as well as annual filers and quarterly filers. So I've highlighted on this report, your quarterly filing months. And every one of those months, we will see a tick up in sales taxpayers as well as sales tax dollars. You're averaging five hundred and one taxpayers per month, which is great. And so we don't see any huge spikes. Again, February being at six oh four, that's completely normal. On page seven, what you'll see is we've taken your top taxpayers for both your twelve months combined, as well as for the month of April twenty twenty-three. The way that this report is always going to be generated is your taxpayer reports are going to be for the previous month. Your dollars allocations will be for this month because we sometimes don't get the taxpayer reports from the state on time. So that's why it is the month of May, but we're representing April of twenty-three. What you'll see here is on your top twelve, you'll see those top two taxpayers for the, for your last year and the dollar amounts they contributed, as well as those for April and the dollar amounts that they contributed. We compare these side by side every single month. Currently, for your recovery, that's not, we don't have any recoveries yet because we've just begun working for you all. As recoveries roll in, that will be updated. There were eight businesses during the month that filed over one thousand dollars. And we like to look at that because that's indicative of a really very not month for that particular business. In all those eight businesses were seventy-one percent of the check that you received for April. Now going to page eight, speaking of your e-commerce and nexus, we are showing ninety-four percent of all revenues received by the city to be that generated from the cloud. We have twenty-four total businesses in April that filed from locations physically located within the city and four hundred and eighty-three filings that were cloud-based. Again, it's, it's the way of the future and it's a benefit for everyone. I mean, my front door is indicative of Amazon. And so I understand that it is. And I know that is something that we are addressing and looking into, but as of right now, it is still very healthy for the city. Now on page nine, this is where we move into current month information. We did receive from the state your current allocation of twenty-nine thousand, eight oh five. In May of twenty-two, you had an allocation of thirty-four thousand, six ninety-six. So that's a decrease of sixteen percent. That forced us to kind of go in and take a look at it. And what we found was there were several businesses that in 2022 in May made sales tax allocation payments to you all that did not make payments this month. One of those permits is inactive, they're not here any longer, and one just didn't have enough sales to qualify. There are dollar amounts that you have to have sales tax-wise before you can remit sales taxes to the state. There's no problem with this. It's just that you had some sales taxpayers last year that had very, very good months and they remitted those sales taxes in May. There is nothing, this is not, there's no red flags in this. We've reviewed it. There are no issues where we have businesses falling off. This is just kind of, this happens occasionally. We also have from 2017 to the present, kind of a graphical showing of your May historical allocations. And looking at the bottom, the 2023 and 2022, your allocation averages. So you show again, a mean allocation of thirty-four thousand, seven thirty-two per month. And we use that because if you ever wanted to do a very conservative back of the envelope, what will our budget end up? You can use that number. And that is not taken into consideration quarterly filers, annual filers, and those months where admission to you while you're going to have larger than average sales taxes. That's just flat baseline. Past that, just a sales tax allocation comparison, 2017 to the present, everything looks good. January of 23 had a pretty good payment history there. We don't see any sort of issues with quarterly filings. Everyone seems to be filing on a monthly basis, which is great. A little easier to track the revenue streams with that. And so with that said, that concludes your report. Our next step, again, is following the House Bill and working to ensure that point of sale purchases in the city come back to the city. We're working with the state on that. Anyone who has worked with the state knows that is a slow process. And so if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those for you all.
This is some awesome work. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to serve you.
I sure appreciate your report, thorough.
And these will be forthcoming every month. My personal number is on the bottom of every, every one of these reports. If during the month you have a question or see something happening in the city, please feel free to call me and let me know.
I do have one question. So the, the main goal of this is to recover sales tax from, that's going into neighboring cities because of our zip code. With the huge presence of this being online, do you have any estimates of what percentage of that is actually allocated to here and what we could be missing out on?
Unfortunately, that is, I, I, that is a, I can't give an estimation on that. That is something that we have to do with the state because there are, while we have access to confidential commission, individual business confidentiality, the state will not let us have. So unfortunately, we have multiple correspondences from the state where they say that, say, Amazon, for example. Amazon will be remitted to the city as one month sum, but they will not break Amazon down by one, two, three Main Street. So it's again, a very tedious and long process. So there is no way of telling without going into the actual confidential to say, Amazon, how much we can recover for you all. We're working with the state. Once they render a verdict, it's pretty accurate and we'll know kind of more then. But we do know that, again, it's recoverable up to five years. And the city, excuse me, the state has already started working a process with us. I would love to tell you fifty thousand dollars, but I don't want to hold my, you know.
And Ryan's already reached out to neighboring cities to let them know that we're engaged in this process. So they are aware that if the state contacts them on behalf of some of the e-commerce and the postal issue, they are aware that, that they have been contacted for this purpose.
I just wanted to make myself known so that way if I need to meet with somebody, I'm not distracted. So.
Great work.
Okay, thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. Item five C, consider and take action to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for planning services with Ardura Group for the provision of a comprehensive plan for the city of Simonton. Just for, for pressure, we already, the council has already agreed, approved Ardura to be the contractor of this project. This item is specifically to go ahead and execute the written contract between the city of Simonton and Ardura. Do we have a motion? Thank you. Do we have a second?
Sure.
Any discussion? All right, bearing that, all in favor? By? Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Item D, consider and take action to approve a resolution to create a comprehensive plan advisory committee. We are calling on CPAC to guide the consultant in its development, facilitation, production, and delivery of the plan. This is the advisory, I mean, the advisory committee that will meet monthly with Ardura and review information, compile, and prepare and will be presented to council. Council will make the decisions or anything that's approved or any parts of this plan that move forward. I tapped all this to try and make it quick and I missed one. So we can read the resolution. Whereas the city council of the city of Simonton, Texas, desires to institute a comprehensive plan for the city in order to promote the public health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the city and to promote sound, long-range development planning. And whereas, the council has indicated its intent to use the professional services of planning consultant team who will develop, facilitate, produce, and deliver the plan. And whereas, the council now desires to appoint a minimum of twelve-member committee of individuals representing various neighborhoods, industries, professions, boards, council, commissions, and other appropriate stakeholders throughout the city to guide the consultant in its development, facilitation, production, and delivery of the plan with members of such committee being selected by the mayor, the council, and other representatives of entities related to the content and impact of the plan. And now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Simonton, section one, that the recitals to this resolution are true and correct and are incorporated herein for all purposes. Section two, that the city council of the city of Simonton hereby creates the comprehensive plan advisory committee to work with the city's comprehensive planning consultant team in the development, facilitation, production, and delivery of a comprehensive plan to be presented to the council by the consultant with the recommendations of the committee. A more specific description of the committee member duties and responsibilities attached to this resolution as exhibit A. Section three, that the committee shall be comprised of a minimum of twelve members representing various neighborhoods, industries, professions, boards, commissions, and other appropriate stakeholders throughout the city, including those, certain individuals included in exhibit be attached to and incorporated in this resolution. Section four, that meetings of the committee shall be held at times and locations established by the chair with direction from the consultant. The chairman may call additional meetings of the committee as needed or directed by the consultant. The quorum of the committee shall be by the members present at a call meeting. And a majority vote of the quorum shall be required for any action to be taken by the committee. The committee is strictly advisory and any action taken by the committee shall be a recommendation to the council for its future consideration. The meetings of the committee shall be subject to the Texas Open Meetings Act. Section five, that the chair shall have the authority to create subcommittees of the committee. The chair shall have the authority to select committee members to serve on subcommittees. A meeting of any subcommittee shall be held at the time and location established by the members of the subcommittee and the consultant. A subcommittee may call as many additional meetings of the subcommittee as needed. The quorum of the subcommittee shall be the members present at the meeting and a majority vote of the quorum shall be required for any action to be taken by the subcommittee. Any subcommittee of the committee is strictly advisory and any action taken by a subcommittee shall be a recommendation to the committee for its future consideration. Subcommittee meetings are not subject to the Texas Open Meetings Act. However, if a subcommittee contains a quorum of a body that is subject to the Texas Open Meetings Act, then that body shall follow all requirements of the Texas Open Meeting Act that apply to the quorum of the body on the subcommittee. Section six, that the chair shall appoint one member to serve as vice chair of the committee. The vice chair shall perform the duties of the chair in the event the chair is unable to attend a meeting of the committee. Section seven, that all committee members shall serve at the pleasure of and may be removed by the council. Section eight, that the committee's primary task shall be to guide the consultant in the formation of the plan. Within twelve months of the execution of this resolution, unless additional time is granted by the council, the committee shall automatically dissolve and shall cease its work. The committee's final task before its dissolution will be at the direction of the consultant to assist the consultant in its presentation of the plan to the council at a regularly scheduled open meeting of the city council. scheduled open meeting of the city council. And I am going to conclude a reading of the, sorry, uh, members of the committee. So I will be on the committee as a council liaison. Burns Turner is a council liaison. Justin Doudro, council liaison in emergency management. Stacy Guti, she's an EDC liaison in emergency management. Barb Minton, EDC liaison, and she's a local real estate professional. Glenn Plowman is the president of Twin Whip USA. Angela King, resident and HEB community outreach professional. Susan La Dark, resident and regional hospitality professional. Andrew Perry is a resident and regional industry professional. CJ Aber, resident and area business owner. Brian Jordan, resident and commercial, he's in oil and gas, so he's in industry. Cindy Frost, ETJ resident and former school board member. David Long, ETJ resident and business owner. Jeff Cannon, engineering consultant. Vincent Morales, the commissioner of precinct one. Mandy Bronsel is the commissioner's chief of staff and current school board member. Wayne Rigar, director of planning and infrastructure in Vincent Morales' office. And Chad Morgell, who is the constable of precinct one, representing law enforcement for this committee. So council, after reading all, and saying committee 408, three times in a row, do we have a motion on item D?
Motion.
Second. Do we have a second? Any discussion? All right. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Motion carries. Item E, consider and take action to approve a resolution canvassing the results of the May 6, 2023 election. Mr. Aaron, can you give us the results?
A resolution of the city council of the city of Simonton, Texas canvassing the returns for and declaring the results of the general municipal election held on May 6, 2023 for the purpose of electing three at-large positions to the city council of the city of Simonton, Texas. And canvassing the returns for and declaring the results of the special municipal election held on May 6, 2023 for the purpose of the reauthorization of the local sales and use tax in the city of Simonton at the rate of a quarter of a percent to continue providing revenue for maintenance and repair of municipal streets. Whereas the general municipal election was held for the city of Simonton, Texas on May 6, 2023 for the purpose of electing three aldermen to at-large positions to the city council of the city of Simonton, Texas. And whereas a special municipal election, the special election was held for the city of Simonton, Texas on May 6, 2023 for the purpose of the reauthorization of the local sales and use tax in the city of Simonton at the rate of a quarter of a percent to continue providing revenue for maintenance and repair of municipal streets in the city of Simonton, Texas. And whereas both general and special elections were duly and legally held in conformity with election laws of the state of Texas, and the results of the general and special elections have been verified and returned by the proper judges and clerks. And now therefore, it is resolved by the city council of the city of Simonton, Texas. Section one, that the facts and matters set forth in the preamble of this resolution are hereby found to be true and correct. Section two, that the official canvas of the returns of the general election held on May 6, 2023, or May 17, 2023, excuse me, reflects a total of 464 votes that were cast in the general election. That the canvas of the general election reflects the following named persons received the number of votes set opposite of their names. Burns Turner, 89 votes. Angela King, 72 votes. Thomas Macklemore, 6 votes. Faith Haley, 74 votes. Stephen Levine, 2 votes. Stacy Guti, 67 votes. Courtney Cox, 81 votes. And Cody Turner, 73 votes. Section four, that the canvas of the general election reflects that the following persons were duly elected to the following positions. Burns Turner, Faith Haley, and Courtney Cox. That the official canvas of the returns of the special election held on May 17, 2023, the canvas reflects that a total of 100, I'm sorry, it should be May 17, 16, but, um, reflects that a total of 157 votes were cast in the special election. That the canvas of the special election reflects that the following measure was presented to the voters for either for or against for the measure. The reauthorization of the local sales and use tax in the city of Simonton at the rate of a quarter of a percent to continue providing revenue for maintenance and repair of municipal streets. The tax expires on the fourth anniversary of the date of this election unless the imposition of the tax is reauthorized. Section seven, that the canvas of the special election reflects that the following number of voters voted for or against the measure. For was 104 votes, against was 53 votes. The canvas of the special election reflects that the measure has passed. Section nine, that the document official, reflecting the official results of the election as determined by the Fort Bend County Elections Administrator, is attached here too as exhibit A and incorporated herein for all purposes.
So with, ask for a motion with a correction to the date of the election?
The date of the council.
I'll make a motion with a correction to the date.
Thank you, Ross. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I would pass. Item F is comments before the swearing in. I just have a few things. Stacy, Thomas, and Cody, thank you so much for serving the city of Simonton as council members and for Stacy and Cody also as mayor pro tem over a period of time here. Your dedication to the city, its projects, and committees is commendable, and I hope you will continue to be involved. A few things that, that these council members have also been involved in are the keep Simonton two beautiful committee with outreach, cleanup, trash pickup, holiday decorating, events and planning, emergency operations, which continues, and you'll hear a little bit more about some of the latest things going on with that. But that is COVID supply distribution that went on when we were at the height of that. Emergency reporting for national and federal requirements, which is not glamorous and not seen by a lot of people, but required for us to participate in the national and federal programs. Um, and preparedness for flood response. Valley Lodge drainage project, which had lots of people involved in it, but in order to move that forward and get 10 years worth of work done, these folks have worked really hard to be contributors to that. Approving grant projects and relationship building with our county commissioner and other Fort Bend County cities. So thank you very much. We certainly appreciate it and all you've given. Also, special thanks while we're at it to Angela King and Stephen Levine for being willing to serve, volunteering, that they would give their time in running in the recent election. So to our new council members coming in, Courtney, Faith, and Burns, our city council members, staff, and I look forward to your ideas and working together as we prepare for the next chapter of living a Simonton life. So welcome. It is time for your swearing in. Burns.
If you want to sing, we'll do it one by one. We'll do it. We'll do it in order.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I, Burns Turner.
In the name and, and the authority of the state of Texas, I, Burns Turner.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of city council.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of city council.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I, Faith Haley.
By the authority of the, I'm sorry, I was thinking about.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
In the name and the authority of the state of Texas.
I, Faith Haley.
I, Faith Haley.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of city council.
I will faithfully execute the duties of the.
Office of city council.
Office of city council.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God. In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
I, Courtney Cox.
I, Courtney Cox.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of city council.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of city council.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I'm backing out now.
No backing out now. We got a green tag in the back. You're ready to see. I'm not even seeing.
Now that was going in there, I would put in the order. Um, I move that we revisit and reconsider the agenda with the exception of obviously item D, I believe it is, item E and item F. Do I have a second?
So we, you have a question of speaking? Does Dee have a suggestion?
Well, she made a motion, so she has a second. Could you call for the second? Not for, she made a motion.
Right.
She has a second.
Okay. Sure. Do we have a second?
Yes. I'll second.
All right. Any discussion?
I'll just, I mean, I can throw it out there. The reason I'm asking for that is just because of the fact that I don't, we had a quorum with only Kelly being here and Justin not being here, and then we were elected on the 6th, and that was actually, um, done by Fort Bend County on Thursday. The canvassing was said to you on Thursday.
This is the canvassing tonight that I'm doing.
Right.
So it's on the 16th.
Right. But I could have walked in last week and.
No, you can't until the council approves. Until the council approves the canvass, you're not a council member.
So once the election is done, it's not official?
No.
So the laws, you have, you have at least five days before you can take, take a seat at the council after elected. The canvassing happens between three days and essentially 11 days after, after the election. And so you don't take your seat until after the canvassing was stated tonight. So, so, but you, you, there was, there was a, there was a quorum and, and all.
That means that I just, I think the new city council that was elected.
The seat just while we're still in discussion, the seat is canceled because all the authority that has had its entire time until the new council is sworn in, which actually could be in June. We didn't, we don't choose to do that. So it's, I just, I don't need to affirm something that our attorney has said, but the city council members were here in a quorum tonight.
Again, I just said, I think we, I think the current city council that was elected and would like to, if, want to visit those issues and like to revisit it if possible on the 6th of June.
So there are, so there are two, two issues there. One is that you, so you have a, you have an agenda and the previous council, and that was just a few minutes ago, has handled all of those items. Um, so the only thing that can happen is the mayor can, what we can do is if you want to revisit some of these items, what you, the motion you made was to revisit some of that stuff can be put on a future agenda for this council to consider. Right now, what we're looking at is there's two, two items left over. And so that's going to be the, the appointment of the mayor pro tem. And then, and then our executive session item.
Right. So we have executive session, reports, and electing the mayor pro tem.
But what you can do, because the motion said we should reconsider it, any item on the agenda that's there now, you can talk about it. But if you're able to take action on a separate, separate item, that'll lead to be something that you as a council.
No, I was asking that we revisit on, on those two items that action was made.
You said it wouldn't, wouldn't be an action tonight.
And that's fine, that's fine to do, but we.
No, just revisit it on a, on a, on a.
On a future.
Future. Yes.
So what, what I mean, when I'm taking this, so just to make sure we're clear on the motion. The motion is to revisit what two items?
The comp plan, um, and the committee.
So the comp plan committee, the, the motion said to put that on a future agenda. So in the June one, what the motion is second is to put those two items on your, either the next meeting in May or the, if you have another meeting in May, I don't think this is the second meeting in May. Then the first meeting in June, it would be on the agenda.
June 6? No. June 20th, June, uh.
June 4th.
June 20th.
June 6 is the regular meeting day.
So since the item's already been approved by a forum, I'm a little bit out of loss about entertaining the motion. So you'll have to guide us on how we have to entertain this motion and go through the problems.
There's not, there's not too much discussion about it, but the motion second wants to put an item on the future agenda. So we can't really talk about it, but what the request is, has been made, you know, first motion and second, to put two items on the future agenda, which would be, it sounds like the comp plan and the contract for the comp plan and then the, the committee. That's all it's, that's all going to be talked about. And if, you know, after discussion, that can be placed on, on any agenda, my assumption that, that has been said is they're going to put it on the, the first meeting in June. And so that, that's the only discussion that can happen.
So the 11-month action plan that's been established already for the comprehensive plan would be delayed by a month.
True.
Because we would not sign the agreement, even though the council has already.
That, that's not true. So, so what would happen is you, you already had authority under the, under the previous item that was discussed tonight, establish the committee that was approved, signing, signing the contract as approved. What will happen is we'll revisit that, those items. And so, I mean, that can, that can be a lot of things, but that doesn't prevent you from establishing the committee that was already approved by the council and entering the contract that was already approved by the council. All that's happening is there's two items that are going to be on the upcoming agenda if, if the motion is, is passed.
Okay. Great. Any further discussion? All right. Um, all in favor of Courtney's motion, this was going to be restated, but you'll, you'll have to leave her. All right. I'm sorry, with one eye?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, can we, can you restate with motionless, like write it down, please?
Just to revisit, to revisit, I don't have the, I'll look my other agenda down there. To revisit item 5. Uh, C. 5C and 5D. Sorry.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Are you abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
Thank you. Okay. At this point, we will adjourn into executive session. And when we come out, we'll be addressing reports and collection of the mayor pro tem. Everybody's welcome to come back, but we're going to lock up some walls.
Mayor, just for clarity, are you the, 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 the attorney?
Yes. Sorry, again.